Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We appreciate everybody being here this evening. This is the April the 16th, 2024 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting of the City of Longview. I'm now calling it to order and asking for our invocation and the pledge to be given by Commissioner Nathaniel Harold.
Natasha.
Natasha, sorry.
I knew I was gonna do it.
All right, let us bow our heads. Lord God, thank you for waking us up this morning. Thank you for carrying us to this meeting, to and from God. Thank you in advance for giving us wisdom, discernment, and most importantly, a mind to obey what you would have us do for the city and this community in Jesus' mighty name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If I keep practicing, I'll get your name correct. I know, I know you, I just can't remember. All right, the next thing on the agenda is the approval of the March 19th, 2024 minutes. Have commissioners, have you had time to look them over?
Yes.
Anyone have any questions on them? At this time, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Passed unanimous. Item number six is the citizen comment portion on the agenda this evening. The citizen comment is not part of the public hearing. This is in case somebody in the audience would like to speak on some topic that does not have anything to do with planning and zoning. Anyone like to speak to citizen comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda item, which is item number four. The consent agenda item is an agenda where the Platts meet the requirements of the City of Longview subdivision ordinance. They're approved with one vote unless a member of the planning and zoning, any member of the public, or the applicant would like the item removed for a vote. Anyone in the audience like this to be taken from the consent agenda item? Seeing none, I will take a motion for approval of the consent agenda item.
Motion approved.
Have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing done, it passes. To the regular agenda item number seven, the purpose of the meeting is to hear all of the testimony of those in support and opposition to the application before the commission. Tonight is the first of two public hearings, which are required to approve change in zoning. The commission also considers Platts. The procedure that we'll go through, first of all, the staff will present the, what is being asked. The applicant will then be asked to speak, then we'll have the general public, those in agreement and those in disagreement with it. And after this is taken, I will close the public hearing and we will take a vote on the matter. We go to regular agenda item number A. Angela.
Thank you. This is a public hearing will be held to consider application PD 24-01 filed by Forrest Williams, requesting a rezone of approximately 1.502 acres of lot 6A Block 1, the Hamptons of Longview, from Plan Development 13-02 to Plan Development Office located 1156 East Hawkins Parkway. So the applicant is requesting to rezone from a planned development for a nursing home. This lot used to be part of the property to the west, which is a skilled nursing facility, but the previous developer subdivided that lot, and so it had the same zoning for a nursing home. And so the applicant is requesting to rezone this property to allow for an office at 1156 East Hawkins Parkway. The applicant is proposing to construct an approximately 2,500 square foot building along with parking. The site will allow for office zoning district regulations, including setback minimums, sign minimums, landscaping, and parking. And through the development process, the site will meet the requirements set forth in the UDC and all other City of Longview codes. Hawkins Parkway is classified as a minor arterial roadway and is maintained by the City of Longview. Access management is essential to avoid traffic congestion and delays caused by turning movements for vehicles entering and exiting the roadway. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with the future lane use map and surrounding uses, therefore it does not constitute spot zoning. I would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Commissioners, any of you have any questions of Angela at this point? Mr. Williams, if you will approach the mic, give your name, please, and your address. You may present your proposal.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear the first part. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear the first part.
Just give your proposal.
Go ahead and present your proposal.
Just give your proposal.
Tell them what you plan on doing.
Just tell us about the proposal.
I just planned on building a professional financial services office there on that spot.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? Then you may sit down.
All right. Thank you.
At this time, I will open the public hearing and ask if there is anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of the proposal. Anyone in the audience that would like to speak against the proposal or have questions? Seeing none, unless commissioners have any other questions, we will call for a vote. Have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Passes by unanimous action. Regular agenda item number B.
A public hearing will be held to consider application S 2404 filed by 2120 East Loop 281 LLC, requesting a specific use permit to allow for a bio-mining processing facility to extract precious metals and other elements from recycled materials in heavy zoning, heavy commercial zoning district for abstract 360 A Jordan Survey located at 2120 East Loop 281. The applicant is requesting an SUP to allow for a bio-mining processing facility to extract precious metals and other elements from recycled materials in heavy commercial zoning district as seen here on the zoning map. Previously, a vessel fabrication shop occupied this building, and the applicant is proposing using this facility to recover precious metals and other elements. A specific use permit is required for a recycling processing facility within this zoning district to ensure no negative impact on surrounding properties. East Loop 281 is classified as a principal arterial roadway and is maintained by Tech Dot. This type of development is appropriate along this roadway as long as access management is followed. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with surrounding uses, therefore it does not constitute spot zoning. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Commissioners, do you have any questions at this point?
Hey Angela, that sounds like it would be a heavy commercial. What would that type of business typically fall under on the zoning?
So in our zoning ordinance, it's allowed by right and light and heavy industrial and does require a specific use permit in heavy commercial zoning district.
Okay, so there's not any existing zoning that would allow it without a special use?
Well, it is allowed by right in heavy and light industrial, but requires the specific in heavy commercial. Yeah.
Okay.
Is there any environmental impact? I know you said it wouldn't have any impact on the land surrounding. Is there any environmental impact that was looked at? Have they looked at anything like that? How it would be affected?
I'm not sure the applicant is here to answer any of those questions.
That'd be a great question.
Anyone have any more questions of Angela at this point? Mr. Northcutt, if you would approach the mic, please state your name and your address.
Good evening, my name is Walter Northcutt. I reside at 1705 Wood Place, Longview, Texas, and I represent 2120 East Loop 281, the partnership that owns it. And I'm happy to answer any questions that I can.
So that's my same question still remains. Is there any environmental impact to the surrounding properties based on the work that you're gonna be doing?
Not by just giving the special use, but I mean, the business that would, is contemplating going there would be regulated by TCEQ and they would have to report to them.
That's what I wanted to know.
Yeah, they're regulated by TCEQ.
And what was there previously?
A vessel fabrication shop.
Are they putting in a scrapyard there, recycling center?
A scrapyard? It's not a scrap.
Well, you're taking in heavy metals and recycling them, so you're gonna have scrap coming and going in there, right? So is that what I'm thinking?
Well, probably not the scrap you're thinking about.
Yeah, so the use is not, is not gonna be a scrapyard. It's a recycling, it's a recycling facility, and so it won't be a scrapyard. We do have a separate use for scrapyard, and it is not gonna be a scrapyard.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions of Walter at this time? You may be seated, and I'll open the public hearing at this time. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of the proposal? Anyone like to speak in opposition? Please come to the mic. I see none, so I will, unless you have more questions, commissioners, I'll call for a vote.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve.
And a second.
And I have a second, several. Did you get it, Angela?
Yes.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Passes by unanimous vote. Regular agenda item number C.
Thank you. A public hearing will be held to consider application S 24-05 filed by Alba and Oteo Medina, requesting a specific use permit to allow for a one-family dwelling in heavy commercial zoning district for lots 1 and 2, Block 2, new city Block 159, Marlboro East, Number 1, located at 1,000 and East Cotton Street. The applicant is requesting to build a single-family dwelling in heavy commercial zoning district as seen here on this map. The lots are located on the southeast corner of Davis and Cotton Street and are currently vacant. Specific use permit is required for the construction of a new family, new home within this zoning district to ensure no negative impact on surrounding properties. Cotton Street is classified as a minor arterial roadway, and Davis Street is classified as a local roadway. Both roadways are maintained by the City of Longview, and this development is appropriate along these roadways as long as access management is followed. Staff finds the proposed zoning change is consistent with surrounding uses, therefore it does not constitute spot zoning. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any of the commissioners have any questions of Angela at this point?
Angela, are they proposing, it's one single-family residence that they're proposing? Is there a certain square footage? Was there a limit on the square footage that they could put on that lot? Or there's no minimum lots, no minimum build size? Is there a certain amount that they can build on there?
The minimum house size will be 1,000 square feet.
Okay.
Or, I'm sorry, 1,200.
1,200, okay.
Any other questions of Angela? Is the applicant present? Would you approach the mic, please? See if commissioners have any questions for you. State your name, please, and your address.
My name is Alba Medina. Alba Medina, my address is 2604 South Green Street.
Commissioners, you have any questions? Guess you got off easy. You may sit down.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience, I'm gonna open the public hearing. Anyone in the audience like to speak in favor? Anyone want to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I will take a motion from the commissioners.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing done, it is passed by unanimous vote. See, we're on number D.
Go ahead, Angela.
Okay. A public hearing will be held to consider application Z 24-03 filed by Trent Tutte, requesting a rezone from agricultural and single-family four zoning districts to town home zoning district for approximately 27.674 acres of abstract 360 Alexander Jordan Survey located on the south side of Page Road east of Victor Drive. The applicant is requesting to rezone this property from agriculture and single-family four zoning district to town home zoning district for a proposed town home subdivision. On Tuesday, April the 9th, which was last Tuesday, the developer scheduled a neighborhood meeting in the council chambers here where the developer presented his project to the neighbors. The developer, along with staff, answered many of the questions concerning and concerns, including drainage and traffic flow. Page Road is classified as a collector and is maintained by the City of Longview. This type of development is appropriate along this roadway as long as access management is followed. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with our future lane use map and surrounding uses, therefore it does not constitute spot zoning. I would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions for Angela?
You said they had some discussion about drainage and things like that coming in. My only question is, are they gonna be doing, how many streets are gonna be coming through there? Are they just doing, proposing one new street to come through the whole subdivision?
So there, for this phase, it's just one street coming off of Page and then tying into, I can't remember the street to the, that's going east and west, but they are proposing to tie into that existing subdivision. The street that comes off of Page Road is called Victor, and then there's a couple of cul-de-sac or streets that dead end into this property. And so this property will have, I think, two points to tie in to the adjacent neighborhood.
Okay, 'cause that was my concern. I know that there are two dead ends over there, and I was hoping that those people would have another route out of their neighborhood.
Yes.
And this will provide that for them?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions for Angela from the commissioners? If the applicant is present, if you will approach the mic, please, give your name and your address.
Hello, name's Trent Tutte, address is 2313 Northeast Monroe and Longview.
Okay.
Happy to answer any questions you individuals.
You just wanna answer questions?
Would you like to give any background on your company or your developments or previous developments that you've done in the city?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. So my name's Trent Tutte, my business partner's Stephen Hicks. We've been in business since 2007. We're home builders and we're developers. We currently have one development going just outside the city limits, but it falls in the ETJ. It's a 47-lot development, one to three-acre tracts, and then we have a development in Hallsville that's a little bit, you know, different clientele, different sized houses, things like that. But I'm third-generation home builder and what we do for a living, basically.
How many are we proposing in the first phase?
First phase will be 24 units. It'll be a combination of two-bedroom, two-baths, three-bedroom, two-baths, four-bedroom and two-baths. All of them will have garages.
Okay.
And they're gonna be for seller rent?
We're gonna kinda test the market. We see a combination of both, we're gonna test the market and just see what it holds.
What's the lot size on those? Are they, are you doing all minimum lot size or?
Yes, they're probably a little bit deeper than the minimum.
Yeah, they're a little deeper, and I think they're actually a little wider. I was looking at the plans today, 'cause our minimum lot width for town home zoning district is 25, and I believe I saw some that were 40.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, we're 40 to 45 on the width.
So you're proposing a little yard? Are you going zero lot line on the side? Are they sharing?
So of course, the ones that are attached are sharing, but then as you separate them, you'll have seven, six, seven, eight feet. So we have about 15 combined, and then of course...
So the scope is attached in the middle and two detached on the end, so you're doing...
It's gonna change some. The majority of them will be all, each unit will have two doors, but we do have some that will be like three doors and four doors, just trying to accommodate the best use of the space.
Right.
But then all of them will have fenced-in backyard and, you know, decent-sized front yard.
What is the minimum square footage that you guys are doing per unit?
Yes, ma'am. So they're gonna range anywhere from 1,200 square feet up to like 1,600 square feet.
So for the attached units, are they sharing lots? Are you gonna have them on separate lots too, so you can sell them later?
So it's required with it being town home, each lot, each unit has to have its own property.
Well, I knew you were doing attached walls. I didn't know, you know, with the firewall, I didn't know if you were gonna be, so you are zero-lot lining on those?
Yes, ma'am, on those.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure of.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Any other questions, Mr. Tutte?
Mr. Tutte, what did you hear from the neighborhood? What was some of the information you had from the people?
So, a lot of it is just your typical concerns, like, you know, losing trees, where are we attaching in, traffic. I think there's some improvement that's been waited on, like on the corner of Delia and toward the loop, that I think they're eagerly anticipating. There's one gentleman, I'm sure you'll be hearing from him in a few minutes about the drainage. He's on the south end of us, and his property takes on a lot of drainage, and he has major concerns, which is rightfully so. We were trying to explain to him that, you know, if anything, this should be a positive, a benefit for him, 'cause right now, anytime it rains, all that water is just free-flowing through our tract of land however it wants to. Once we start developing, we'll have controls in place. We'll have storm drains, we'll have, you know, detention ponds if required to catch it, slowly drain it. So at the very, you know, at very worst-case scenario, nothing should be changing, nothing will be adding on anybody's property, shouldn't be a negative impact, but we anticipate like normal, when you put it in development, it's actually gonna improve the drainage.
Right, but the outfall won't be on his property.
Ma'am.
The outfall will not go on his property.
It's gonna be going however it's still going. You know, whichever direction the drainage is going now, that's still the way it's gonna go, but we might have storm drains to the neighborhood to catch it, control it, and then we'll have, if needed, we'll have a detention pond to collect it and then slowly disperse of it.
Okay, but you're working with engineering on a plan for this?
Yes, ma'am, but the engineering won't be done until after, if we get past this.
Do you have a preliminary site plan already worked up?
We had, we had just...
Outside of your plan?
No, ma'am. We had that, and that shows the topo and everything, but far as engineering, it's so, so much involved in it, it's usually always after this part.
Right, we don't have a copy of the topo, so I can't see the grade lines or anything like that. I don't see what the BFE is or anything like that, so I wouldn't know off the top of my head.
Sure, sure, yes, ma'am. It's kinda hard to see here, and I can walk over there if you want.
So is the BFE higher on, is that what the concern is? He's afraid that you're gonna be draining down?
He, he's already, basically, he says in a heart ring now.
Right.
A lot of the, all the water's collecting in his backyard, you know, heading north to south, basically, in his backyard, and he's worried that, you know, whatever we do, is that gonna magnify to it? Is his house gonna flood?
Right, 'cause you're gonna have to build up your lot.
Yes, ma'am.
Right. So is it? I know you're saying it's not, but in your plans, will you put something in your plan to mitigate that?
Yes, ma'am, we're building everything up, but at the same time, I guess what I was, what I thought you were asking, we can't control the route water.
Well, no, you can't control it, but I wanna make sure that you're putting something in to mitigate that issue.
Absolutely, yes, ma'am, and it will be required. Everything will be overseen and inspected from the city, so of course, we'll definitely be required to do that.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Questions?
Mr. Tutte, you may be seated, there may be questions in a minute. Is there anyone in the audience? I'm gonna open the public hearing. Anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this? Anyone in the audience who would like to speak in opposition? Please approach the mic, state your name.
My name is Jack Powell, live at number 6 Victor Drive. This property butts up to mine. I'm sure we're all aware, this is a FEMA-recognized flood plain. I'd like to state that the creek right now is like six, eight foot deep, maybe 10. This last rain, and it happens real regular, when it rains like that, it likes maybe two inches coming in my yard. Before they can meet the BFE standards, they're gonna have to have like a four or five-foot pad to build their houses on. You put that much field dirt in that area, and it's gonna force water out onto the surrounding areas. He's talking about retention ponds and storm drains. When you have an area that's lower than everything else around, how are you gonna have a storm drain drain off? Unless you have pumps to pump it out. It's a hazard in the making if you allow them to build anything in this area. And he's talking about this being affordable housing. If you figure the cost, he said the house is gonna cost, plus taxes, plus utilities, plus regular homeowner's insurance, plus fluid flood insurance, it's gonna cost roughly $3,000 a month to live there. That's not affordable housing. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Wait just a minute, see if the commissioners have a question for you, Mr. Powell. Anyone have a question?
I'd like to know what's, how you've been handling the rainfall so far. Is there, do you have a proposal? Do you have, how have you been handling it so far? Do you have an option for them? Are you proposing?
Man, I'm kinda hard to hear, Dr. Powell.
No, that's okay. I just said, how have you handled, how have you handled your storm outfall up until this point? What are you doing about the ponding that's going on now?
It's not coming to my yard.
It's not coming to your, okay.
That's what I'm saying, if it, you put a bunch of field dirt in that area, it's gonna force more water out, and it's gonna come on me and some more people.
Okay.
There's some more people back there behind the other area that's just as bad.
Okay.
Any other question, Mr. Powell, at this point? Anyone else in the audience that would like to speak against this proposal?
Yes, my name is Stacy Graves. I live at 2610 Page Road, and so my lot sort of backs up to the back, but I'd like to speak for the whole neighborhood. I have concerns, just like the gentleman before me, about flooding in the area, about we're taking away all the, you know, and it was sort of condescending, oh, we're taking away trees. I understand you have to take away trees to build affordable housing, but I would like to see us get to a place, because we do need the trees, we need the trees for air, and they hold systems in place so that you don't have flooding. And as you said, there's a creek, there's a pond, and so flooding does take place in that area, and if you do build it up, then it has to have a way to go. And so I see us just pushing this through so builders and developers can make money, and the City of Longview makes money off the tax revenue, but could we do, could there be compromise somehow in just saying, yeah, we're pushing this plan through, maybe adjustments or whatever needs to be made?
Anyone like, I don't have your name, I didn't get a speaker card on you.
Stacy Graves.
Anyone have a question?
You know, it's always, it's always difficult when folks come and they have situations like this and concerns, and every time, my first thought is, you know, when you've got a home with land around it, it's like someone building a competing business across the street. Well, if you didn't wanna burger joint going in across the street from your burger joint, you probably should've bought the land. There's really, I mean, you can't say no, you can't progress. You can't build.
I agree.
And I understand the, I mean, that's a bad situation to be in. I don't know how many years Mr. Powell's lived in his house, probably, I would assume a long time. Progress is gonna happen. People are gonna build houses, they're gonna make money, people are gonna have places to live, and the town's growing, and that's part of the process.
And I agree with that, and I understand that, but I'm saying, maybe there's some compromise in the middle.
What would you recommend on that?
To where there are not so many houses being made, there's different outlets, we have a plan in advance for where the water's going to flow and all that gets built up, and we don't look at it after the situation arises.
Well, one thing on that is, when it comes to this point, this is the very first thing. When they get into all the engineering and whatnot to see what's practical to go there, it could change dramatically, and I've seen that happen a lot of times. This is just for them to allow, to plot it this way, to go forward with the process.
And let me backdoor on what Commissioner Jones is saying, 'cause I definitely agree, but Ms. Graves, I wanna, I wanna speak to you and say, it is very sad, and I'm very sorry that we don't require some type of development, some type of site development or at least preliminary engineering to be able to provide that for you all, because again, it would assist us in being able to make better decisions, to assist the community. So let me first... So let me first of all say, I'm sorry about that. But in regards to what Commissioner Jones is saying, we can't stop progress and I, and I apologize on everybody's behalf, because we just can't do that. But at the same time, we do want to, you know, take into consideration everything that you're saying, cause it's a concern for us as well. But regulation does not allow us to be able to do that for you. And it would be a great help, it'd be a great help to everybody here, but again, we're not able to do that. And I really do hope that you can work with the developer directly, because it seems as though he's, he's wanting to do that. You can work with him directly on while they are developing those plans, when he sits down with his, um, civil engineering team, that maybe he can bring in the community again to have some discussions around those plans. And I think it'd be advantageous of you to reach out to him.
Like to consider, consider the people who are living in this area that's being developed and the one, the main lane that they're considering, the two houses. And those people aren't here, because a lot of times people can't come in or they don't get the notifications or they don't understand what is going to be happening. The house is to the right and the left of where that main road is gonna go through. I'm not trying to say, stop progress, don't develop. I'm not saying that at all. I'm saying, let's look at the plan and maybe we adjust or adapt it somehow to where everybody in that neighborhood who chose to live there because of its environment, it's not detrimental to them. So make a, a nice neighborhood, so people can have trees and it actually is affordable and people have options to buy the homes, instead of it becoming a large, let's slap all these houses in here and have a huge rental development.
We appreciate you saying that, most definitely, and please know that you are heard. I, I, I completely understand. And again, I hope that you and some of the neighborhood people are able to work with the developer to really be able to communicate on some of those issues and flesh out a good plan that'll work for both of you all. But we do appreciate you coming and I thank you so much for standing.
It's not the, this isn't the be-all or the end-all.
Yeah.
Still goes to council. And one thing I would tell folks is, you know, I'd keep open lines of communications with Trent.
Right.
And, you know, beat cords will be nice, you know, nobody, he's got a job, he's got stuff to do, just like you guys have a place.
I understand that, I have family-
I would stay talking with him, you know.
The business and I have no problem with that, but it said, if you have anything and you're against this plan-
Yeah.
I'm, I'm speaking up, uh, for my neighbors that aren't here.
Yeah.
And I'm against the plan as it stands right now. I'm not against progress and people having homes that are needed.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I would encourage you to talk to your council rep here. I mean, if you know Mr. Nussstadt, I, I, and you may have already spoken to him, but-
No.
Um, I think that you'd find an advocate for hearing your concerns and moving, you know, working forward, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Graves.
We, we appreciate you coming, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in opposition to this? Please come forward. State your name and address.
My name is Marcel Wilcox, number one Lawrence Street. Um, we were, didn't get a notice for the meeting that was about the neighborhood earlier. This is, I don't even know where the, that, where's the access gonna be to this neighborhood?
I'm happy to get up and answer any questions she might have, if the council allow me to.
And I'll, I'll pull up the plan, so, um-
And we did have a few, uh, addresses that got returned in the last three or four days. I'm not sure if that was what happened, but we, it was about six in total, but we got the list directed from the city. I'll hear the cemetery.
Can you do the microphone?
That's your turn.
Thank you.
Okay, ma'am, so you're asking where the main entrance is?
I wanna know where all of them are.
Okay. So I apologize, I can't quite reach that high, but if you look on the very top of the screen, where it's kind of the darker black up there, can you point, laser?
The laser pointer won't point on to the TV, I'm so sorry.
Is that, is that Delia?
That, that is Page Road. So, yes, ma'am, that's gonna be the main entrance? There was a picture, Angela, earlier.
Where the sign is, will you-
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. That might be helpful to show you that, if you wanna see it.
I know, but it's-
Okay.
I saw the picture.
Well, then, that's gonna-
But is there gonna be entrances in the neighborhood?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, that's correct. It, it's required. So you have the first one, which will be on phase one, is on Lawrence Street?
That's my street.
Yes, ma'am, that's it. And then the second one will be Lawson Street.
Uh, Lawrence Street's probably two-lane road, I don't, um, mean it's not wide enough to-
Ye, yes, ma'am.
Would you approach the mic, please, and speak in there, please?
I'm sorry, um, well, um, the main entrance, one of the entrances is gonna be on my street, Lawrence Street. It's a very narrow road and that's gonna be, people are gonna use that instead of Page Road.
Okay.
You can have a lot of traffic, and to Mr. Powell's point, I mean, when it rains hard, it's, he gets water all the way up in his yard.
Yes, ma'am.
And we are a little bit higher, so we don't, but we still get it, cause that creek fills up, um, in an hour.
Yes, ma'am.
And it fills up. There's gonna be, are you gonna have to build a bridge over that or?
It's like I said, we're not too engineering yet, but I'm pretty sure a lot of that will have to be taken underground with, you know, with engineering plans and then, uh, and then we'll, we'll take it and just, you know, head down south from there with it. And we'll have to see if a detention pond is gonna be required on the edge of the property or what it's gonna be.
Well, I, we have the same concerns as he does.
Yes, ma'am.
Cause the water's gonna go somewhere and it's gonna go where it already is.
Sure.
And there's going to be more.
Yes, ma'am. But like I was trying to explain to him, that's very rightful. I mean, I, if I was you, I'd be asking the same questions as well. But right now, like I was trying to explain earlier, it's just a free flow. There, there's no structures in place, there's nothing in place. It's just the water's going how it wants, there's nothing controlling it, so if-
Cause it's woods.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. But if, if anything, if anything, once engineering gets involved and once the city gets involved and controls are put in place, it'll be like everywhere else in the city, where it's gonna be a controlled plan. And if anything, I, I really think it's gonna help the whole drainage situation in that area.
It might help the drain, but it's not gonna help with me having all that traffic in my front yard.
I understand that, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Um, I live on a dead-end street. There's, I mean, you're just gonna be tearing out all of the woods, right?
Yes, ma'am.
It, it being a residential neighborhood, I mean, it would probably run the lines, the traffic lines of most neighborhoods, which would be early in the morning and late in the evening, so, um, I don't see a consistent-
Well, if it's a housing area, there's gonna be traffic all day. I understand people go to work at eight and come home at five.
One thing to keep in mind.
There's gonna be traffic all day.
Victor's not the safest street to pull out on, so if anything, we might be taking more traffic.
That's only, it's only a hundred yards from Victor now, if you're pulling out on Page Road where that sign is.
But how long have you lived on Victor?
Um, we've lived in our house over thirty years.
Yes, ma'am. So, you know, when you pull up to the stop sign of Victor and Page Road, of course, you have no issues heading right, but in my opinion, there's a main safety hazard heading left. You have that, that real, that real steep hill.
Yes.
And basically, when I'm pulling out there, it's one of those deals, you look right, you look left, you look right, you look left, and you kinda just gas on it, trying to get out there. So if anything, I think we might be getting more traffic coming off Victor through our neighborhood to come out our way, just cause it's gonna be safer. Like you said, it's a hundred yards farther from that hill. And I see a lot of people doing that, just to avoid having to pull out in front of that steep hill.
It's just gonna change-
It, it's gonna, it's gonna change things for you, yes, ma'am, I understand that.
I mean, and I understand change.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, they're building houses on the other side.
Yes, ma'am.
Building across, cross Page Road.
Yes, ma'am.
It isn't that, it's, there's just gonna be a lot more-
Sure.
Traffic.
Yes, ma'am.
And a lot more water. And I understand you're gonna have engineers on all of that, but we still flood in places where engineers have done their job.
Yes, ma'am.
It's-
I, I understand your concern.
And I feel that it will cost us more to insure the house. It's going to affect me.
Okay. Why do you feel like it's gonna cost you more to insure the house, you're about me asking?
Because it, will it be like a floodplain? Will it be?
No, ma'am, you don't have flood insurance on your house now.
But will I need it?
No, ma'am, no, ma'am. FEMA, FEMA will not be coming in there and redoing flood maps and requiring you to have flood, flood insurance. Michael, that's every twenty years or? And, and, and nothing, nothing with your flood certificate, with your flood elevation's gonna change and requiring any of that?
I believe the new flood map just came out. I mean, very new, very new, within the last year or so.
And this property is actually not in our-
Yes, I didn't, I didn't wanna get in the mud earlier, but our property's not in the floodplain. We went to purchase that property, we, we couldn't afford to build all these houses if we're having to get insurance, flood insurance on them. Cause you have to have flood insurance on them, not just if you occupy or own it, but if, during construction too.
Okay.
What kind of street is Victor Drive? That might help her as well. What, Angela, do you know right offhand?
It's-
What, it's just the neighborhood?
It's, it's a local street, yes. It's a local street maintained by the city.
So it, it is, I know it probably doesn't seem like it, it could hold two-way traffic, but it is a local street, it's set up to hold it, you know?
I think her concern wasn't Victor.
I'm talking about the one right in front of my house.
It's her concern.
So Victor is not a local street?
Vic, I mean, Lawrence is-
Yes, ma'am, it's the corner street.
Mike, I guess my most concern is, I understand you're gonna worry about your development. You're not gonna worry about my house.
Well, we have a liability at the same time. We, we cannot, you know, have a negative impact on you by any means.
So my property value is gonna increase or decrease?
You know, like, like most things, most things are gonna go up. But I'm not gonna say it's gonna have a direct, you know, reflection, relationship with us.
Right.
But, but it could. But also, if your, if your tax increases, that means the value of your house should increase too.
But again, you're gonna worry about your neighborhood and I'm worried about mine.
Well, but at the same time, you're worrying about, you're not worrying about my land, you're worrying about your land, right?
Sure I am.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I don't want your neighbors to have issues either.
Sure.
I don't want, I don't want kids to get run over. I don't want, I mean, the buses are gonna be running through. This is Halsel Schools.
Yes, ma'am.
So there's gonna be buses running down the neighborhood too.
And I, I understand all of your concern, ma'am, but you know, we, we have not gotten where we have by not having a good reputation, being people of our word. And so, yes, you know, we have to outlook, we have to look out for our project to make sure that we're doing everything we're supposed to be doing, you know, we're following schedule. But at the same time, we have to, we have to meet the, you know, what's required with the city, the inspections. And then also, we do try to be good neighbors, just like they were saying earlier. You know, I'll be happy to give you my cell phone number, I'll be happy to work with you through the project. We have to look out for our best interest, but there's no reason why we can't also look out for yours at the same time.
The, to mirror Commissioner Jones, we, it is progress and it's hard to grow through, but the engineering and site plans that are all gonna be approved before the, they actually start building by the city engineers is a living and breathing document. So it's gonna take months and months for that to happen to begin with. But Angela, what kind of recourse, let's say they're going through the building process and they are finding, after the plans have been approved, that the drainage, drainage still isn't where it needs to be? What kind of recourse do they have before the development is finished? Uh, as they're still doing it, do they, would they need to re, uh?
So they, you know, the neighbors, if they're having drainage issues, they would contact our offices, our engineering offices, and our engineering inspectors would go out there to see what's going on and to see if we can correct the issue at that time.
Okay.
But I hope you would contact us first and let us come look at it really. But, you know, if you live on the corner of Lawrence and Victor, you're more on the west side of us, correct?
Uh, my neighbor lives on the corner of Lawrence and Victor.
Okay.
We're the one house down on Lawrence, we're the only one on Lawrence.
On Lawrence, so you're-
We're the only house facing Lawrence Street.
Okay, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Cause it's an empty lot on the other side.
Right, the, the main drainage path is, is heading more south. So, I mean, like, I'm not saying that you couldn't have any kind of impact, but the, the main flow is gonna be heading that way, from, from what I, if I'm picturing where your house is, if I have that correct.
Yes, I mean, it's, it's the only one, yeah, on, on Lawrence, it's the only one on Lawrence.
And I think as long as they have the proper contact information, everybody does here for the city and for the builder, to make sure that this is moving forward the right way.
We, we appreciate you addressing us. We do have kind of a time limit of about five minutes per speaker. Uh, unless the commissioners have any questions of you?
No, sir.
I see none. Is there anybody else in the audience that'd like to speak in opposition? If not, I will close the public hearing and take a motion.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
We have a motion to approve as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? It passes by unanimous vote. Thank you. Agenda item E.
A public hearing will be held to consider application Z twenty-four dash oh four, filed by Christian Gonzalez requesting a rezone from heavy commercial zoning district to single-family four zoning district for abstract two AR Johnson survey track sixty-one dash oh two, section five, located at thirty-three twenty Bishop Street. Uh, so the applicant is requesting to rezone this property. Most of this property is actually already zoned SF four, just the rear portion is zoned heavy commercial. Uh, the applicant would like to rezone that heavy commercial portion, uh, back to, or to single-family four in order to build a single-family home on this property. Uh, staff finds the proposed zoning change is consistent with our future land use map and surrounding uses. Uh, therefore, it does not constitute spot zoning. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions? Seeing none. Uh, Ms. Gonzalez, would you, do you have anything to add to it?
I do not.
Nothing? Any questions?
Yes.
All right, I'm gonna open the public hearing at this time. Is there anyone who'd like to speak in favor? Anyone like to speak in opposition? Approach the mic.
Yes, ma'am.
You okay?
Yeah, I'm fine, I just, but listen, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Wanda Beckworth, and I wanted to ask the gentleman-
Before you start, Ms. Beckworth, what's your, what's your address?
Two-three, two, uh, thirty-three twenty-three MLK. Okay.
We, we don't have a speaker card either on her, please. Go ahead.
I just wanted to, uh, he said a single, a single housing, fa, a single family house. Okay. And then I heard the guy a moment ago was speaking about the same, kind of the same thing. I hope I'm not wrong. I wanna make sure that it's a single family and not apartments.
It is for single-family, yes, ma'am, that's his request. Yes, ma'am, no apartments.
Okay. Oh, huh.
Can I, uh, add something to that?
Yes.
Could you please come up to the microphone, Christian? Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Good afternoon. I would just like to make clear that this is a proposal and a, and a request for a single-family house. That's what this area is zoned for already. And we have in no intention, or I have in no intention, to build apartments there.
Thank you so kindly.
In fact, I don't even think that's allowed.
It is not.
It is not.
Change, I mean, you know, I don't wanna surprise, I'm, oh, and I don't, I don't like surprises.
I, I don't either.
The, the zoning is for single-family, ma'am, that's, that's what we would approve if we approve it.
Well, okay, I wanna thank you.
And it can't, it cannot be apartments.
Christian, Ms. Beckworth is gonna be on the backside of your property, so it might be nice for you to engage with her when the meeting is over.
Yeah, yeah, you're gonna be right behind me.
She's on the back of your property.
Okay. Thank you, counsel, I appreciate your, your patience, and thank you as well. I need your telephone number.
Is, is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing and to ask for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion for approval, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Passed by unanimous consent. Item number F.
Thank you. A public hearing will be held to consider application Z twenty-four dash oh five, filed by Francisco Olivera, requesting a rezone from agricultural zoning district to heavy commercial zoning district for approximately one point one four acres of abstract one seventeen S Jackson survey tract fifty-eight, located at the northeast corner of Estes Parkway and Eastman Road. The applicant is requesting a rezone for this property located at the northeast corner of Estes Parkway and Eastman Road, from agricultural, seen on the zoning map here in the green, to heavy commercial zoning district. The office, the property owner is proposing to construct either some small office or retail building for lease. Eastman Road and Estes Parkway are both classified as principal arterial roadways and are maintained by text dot. This type of development is appropriate along this roadway, as long as access management is followed. Staff finds the proposed zoning change is consistent with our future land use map seen here and is consistent with surrounding uses, therefore, the request does not constitute spot zoning. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Questions of Angela at this time? Commissioners, none? I will open the public hearing. Is the applicant present? Is there anything you'd like to say?
Francisco is my client, and he's owned this land for several years. He decided, he, he's an oilfield construction guy. He decided to, oilfield's a little slow right now, so he wants to develop this piece of property. And he's gonna put a leased building on it, probably about four thousand square feet, more than likely, two offices, maybe three. That, that's our plan right now. We, we were hoping for a bucky's, but we don't have one, so.
Any questions, Mr. Flat?
I, I should've asked earlier, but where are you, where are you proposing to take access, off Eastman Road?
Off of M L K. That, that M L K kinda goes down a little bit.
Oh, that little side road?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So are, and, and I'm asking because I wanna know, are they gonna, that little side road is dirt, right? It's kinda undeveloped?
I think some of it might be, Kelly, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but so, some of it's a little patchy, but some of it, yeah, let me see if I can see the pictures. Kinda hard to see.
It's a good road, but we met with the city development folks a couple weeks ago, and we're gonna do an asphalt, like a twenty-foot wide asphalt road all the way down to our property, which is the, the cleared off part you see there. And then we'll have a driveway, concrete driveway coming in off of that road. And it'll give the, I think there's two neighbors, maybe, maybe three between us and M L K, where it does the ninety-degree, coming this way. And they'll get a, a new roadway to, to go into their property also.
That's wonderful, that's wonderful, that's what I wanted to hear. Thank you so much, sir.
Yeah, same, yeah.
Any other questions? You're excused. Any, anyone in the audience that'd like to speak in favor? Anyone in the audience like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I will call for a motion. Have a motion to approve. Do we hear a second?
Second.
And a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Passed by unanimous vote.